You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Yep, it's good enough. It being six o'clock, I'll call for order the April 24th meeting of the planning board here in Brooklyn Hall. I'll begin with a roll call. Scott Self, I'm here. Michael York.
Here.
Richard Lang.
Here.
Brandon Self will not be here. Victoria LeFane.
Here.
And James Campesta.
Here.
Mark Scaler.
Here.
Jamie Johnson alternate.
Here.
Chris, yeah, Kristen Reynolds alternate, Michael Scandio alternate, and I will seek Jane for Brandon.
Stacy.
Oh, I need to print you off a new chair this agenda.
Oh, yeah.
They're made alternate.
Yes. My star, Stacy, go down.
There, you're here.
Yep. Okay, the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from April 10th, 2025. And there are no public hearings and other discussions, no other business impact fee discussion and any other business that is required. So, there's nothing for a reasonable impact, there won't be that motion, so let's get to the minutes of April 10th. Anybody want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
So do.
Motion by Mark to approve the minutes of April 10th. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. Is there any further discussion, any changes? And all's in favor, can I say aye or a no? Vote.
I think, I wish not.
Okay, but according to our latest training, you don't have to abstain from it.
Oh, okay.
If you fully understand the minutes from the meeting previous that you were attending, then you can vote on them, so I guess we'll adopt that. Okay, now that brings us right to discussions and other business impact fee discussions. Yep.
Do you want to work with the selectmen?
Oh, that's not on there, because we had a lot there tonight. Let's do the lottery first. And it looks like. It's a pretty simple one here, it's on the back, the picture's on the back. Is that, so that's 6112. Was that an L-shaped block?
It's not an L-shaped.
So was it, was it though? Oh, it's a rectangle, because it looks like they're, you know, I see 6112, 6112, and then 6113. And it looks like 6112 is surrounding 6113. And then just combining that into that whole thing, is that correct?
Yes. Um, they are showing old tax map of lot numbers, to my understanding.
Yeah.
Um, they had a hard time getting the applicants in a room to sign together, so when they put together this paperwork, it was when they had our old tax map of lot numbers, and then by the time they were actually ready to execute, we changed it. And so Christine and I, okay, we're showing old tax map of lot numbers, uh, because we can translate that stuff pretty easily.
Easily enough, yeah, but that doesn't change, right, just another change is there.
Yeah, but you guys are looking at right to require that.
So, that 6113 was a little chunk out of that lot that's going to be the new 6112. It looks like, left-hand corner, top floor, why that road up.
They have a better representation of it, actually.
And, uh, and where does the quick claim date come in? Is that a quick claim for the right-of-way in there that was rendered, uh, 2019 or something?
Oh, they're required, they're required to submit that.
Where is that though? Is that that right down between those two lots there?
Yeah.
I can't, can't quite tell, is it?
Yeah, sorry. Pass this around.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You have a big one, just put it on the table.
Yeah, we have one.
Well, right, can't pass it around?
Forgot that I had that, my apologies, is that right?
Yeah, it's 23, I think it says 23 in our block.
There's this.
What's that?
I got you, got you. There's one over there.
Okay.
This one. I had to talk earlier.
So, what is this?
It is a, there isn't one there, it means the water is on the side of the road, right?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, the water is on the side of the road.
Yeah, there's a label there. Just look in the front too, so I'm looking into.
And we're looking at the way we know stuff, and it looks like this, and they're talking about that.
Says it's 400 line avenue, and I'm assuming it turned into a 20-foot right-of-way, there's a quick claim, talk about a 20-foot.
We don't show right away here. If you're right, we're going to go straight across the road.
So, we're going to end it at that.
It's like the, that, I don't even know where the lot line was, or is. They just don't really clear it, anyway.
These are buildings that back, you know, those buildings that back to back.
And this one here, according to a lender, is the edge of the travel road, and that's there and there, and, I don't know if there's a travel road. I would guess there. Okay, but they're using this edge of the travel road and they're putting right.
That's a lot.
Usually they're down, this is a lot, that's a lot, there's actually six lots, and here originally, that's what they're using.
This would be?
I don't know.
I'm pretty certain assessing days, and so, and they had these little access tracks to the house.
So this is the right-of-way, talking about their 20-foot line.
It's a very weird.
Yeah.
It was, you know.
I cleared it up.
Yeah, so we want to do.
So they said that some of it back in 1929.
Yeah.
And that must be what prefers, like, the little box here, so they, well, through the years, they combined them all, and now they're all going to be just one lot.
So it's going to be more clear.
Set down this statement, that's it. Yeah, every guy mentioned a problem. Yeah. It's got lots of records, they're still building lots.
I have just one technical question, looking at, um, part of the, the, where the, uh, it says the state of Iowa County. And it crossed out, Iowa, put New York, and something. Because I found this, you would know the problem. But, are you allowed to do that?
Yeah. I'm sure they made me figure it out.
So, first, I need to warn the.
I think, I think that's the power of attorney.
Not a deep, the power of attorney.
Yes.
So the power of the attorney is the power of New York. It is, and it signatures it via, you know, if I said, I know the problem, I got it.
Oh, I see, I see what you're talking about, yes. Still in New York, yeah, yeah, they just use a, a, it's like a solid plate form here, you know, cross it out. Sign it and stamp it, no recollection.
That's great. The positive, we're basically seeing. Right, what, what? I'd say the question was, was it possible, I see. What did the people just?
Yeah.
How do they know they're not a customer? You should have waited for once, and then ready to go right, because you should have cut that.
I mean, that's a pretty simple thing that they're doing, and now.
That property has some use at the other cost of. And then to judge the organic plan, because I mean, the lies.
Oh, yeah, so it's all, all going to be 35 now? Because that's a 36 one, right, that's a little one? Oh, are they?
Pretty straightforward.
Everybody think it's straightforward, this is what happens when you have that on the agenda. You go online, it doesn't.
Say the words for us, so that we all have the same understanding of what, what the final boundaries will be.
The words as to the boundaries?
Yeah. So depending on your side of the station, I think we all think the same. In visual.
So it looks to me that this is going to be, it's going to be the boundary line right there. That solid line around the whole outside edge, and they're merging that one little parcel that was right up there into this 6112. So it looks like that's going to be the whole thing, and they had that in that quick claim, and that's that right-of-way, which is part of it anyway, so it just has to be noted in there for instance, it's had some little marking.
Based, based on this, I think this is one lot, and this is another lot, and they're all merging into 6112.
Yeah, but there are only two lots merging, so this must have been 6112 right there, and 6113 is there, they're putting that into 6112, it's only, you know, it's two lots.
Because they, they have this, find, this is the old lot number.
Yeah.
And it was, so it's two, so it's three that are merged.
But, if, you're saying that a lot merging is three lots?
No, I'm saying this was, uh, 6112, this was here.
Yeah.
This was 6113, right, 6113, and all combined, this all combined would be 6112.
I see what you're saying, and I think you're right, because, let's see, it says merge right there, new number merge, so I think you're right, guys.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I looked here.
Oh, you got it, okay, so you see the line lines.
Yeah. So, so actually, this is two very original lines, it didn't show this, the kind of the original lot line was right there down the middle of that road. This was one line, that's the other, so they're merging those two acts. So, pick that up, got that.
Okay.
So we're lodging, lodging two.
Quite a little bit weird, right?
It is, a little odd on that drawing, but it did, it did stretch it out. All right, so, yeah, so it's voluntary merger of old. 6112 on there, of the new tax map, uh, 247 Lot 32 and 247 Lot 33, which were formerly old map, Map 61 Lot 12 and Map 61 Lot 13. So there are two lots being merged together, and they're divided right down the middle at that right-of-way, that right down the middle. I guess we need a motion.
So make a motion that we approve the merger of lots of tax map 247, Lot 32, and Lot 33. And my understanding is that will become on tax map 247, Lot 32.
It looks it. Yeah, ready to do it there. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Richard, a motion by Mark that to approve the voluntary merger, second by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, you can take a stand, aye?
Aye.
All who vote. Okay. And that's enough here, voluntary merger, done, it's like that. Now that brings us to discussions, and we have some paperwork courtesy of Adam on impact fees, and it's from Levins. We had seen that before, Mike, we go across on that about a year ago, I think, about the same thing. Did everyone get a chance to read any of that stuff over about the impact fees? It's the same thing as the RSI, it's right there, but it's a little easier to home to read there. And, any discussion on it? Let's see. So it looks like, again, probably don't like any of it, but I think it's a bit unnecessary, because we can do it anyways, and we have done it in the past anyways, had contractors or, um, applicants pay for upgrades to services that are, are serving by law, or whatever, they're doing subdivision, or whatever happens to be, and they've been willing to do it. One of the examples we gave at the last meeting, I think, was up to, was it, uh?
Flatley.
Flatley, yeah, Flatley there on Sapper Drive, that's still Sapper Drive right there, isn't it? Yeah, where they agreed, I think it's like $30,000 or something, they looked towards resurfacing that road up there. We've done that in the past, and contractors have been agreeable to it. And in the RSI, so we still can, um, make them do it if we can show that it impacts some kind of a surface there, water, sewer, um, roads or whatever, we can require that, and we're still covered, even though we wouldn't have, even though we wouldn't have the impact fee ordinance. We can still have them do it if we can justify the fact that they were impacting.
Yeah, I, can I see that as kind of, um, a one-time improvement of some, like the way, or it could be drainage, drainage, it could be, you know, whatever, that construction is actually running.
Yeah.
Where I see listed for the impact fees scheduled here are the town services. And do you think that that's a clear distinction when it's really the nation?
Yeah, that's definitely a difference, because we can't do that. Uh, if we don't have an impact ordinance, impact fee ordinance, we cannot do it for the services, only for something physical.
And I, I think the value in these is that it's something that gets implemented fairly quickly, because let's have an exploration day for the use of the device. But it gives the town more time to react to the changes. You know, Flatley's going to have, I think, 208 units in there, that's easily going to be 450 to 600 people. You know, a lot of these services will be impacted by that development, and it's too late for that particular development, but, um, I think it's, you know, it takes time. Hire the right people, and really ramp up the services, we can kind of continue making that level of service that we strive for in the town.
Yeah.
And, what you want, here's the CIP report. James, where's where you're at these, seven years, we go out, this is identification of the things that the town needs to do, and the money's going to take the doors. Okay, you take the Flatley, they already told us, if you remember, they're going to have at least 10 children go to the schools. It costs $25,000 a year for one child to go to school, and an adult school later. Okay, so we can use these monies to offset some of that stuff for the schools, when we have, we know they don't have the capacity, uh, the fire station, all these things. We know we need to put in the water system here in West Swansea, we need to make those improvements to get companies in. That, that's an expensive project, that's 6.9 million, that last time you looked, and we don't know if that loan is going to be available next time, in two years, we're going to apply for it here. So, these fees, what they do, they're one-time, but they help not only infrastructure, but they help the schools, the police department, uh, the fire department. There's always little things that come up, if you look in here, you'll see, like, the fire department needs tools, certain tools that get old, outdated, we need new ones. Police department, the same thing, we have the fees in there, and it helps offset property taxes.
But it's not like a wish list, I mean, probably I wouldn't be able to say that the fire department needs a new set of jaws of life and put an impact fee on the Flatley place.
That's why you look on seven years.
No, it doesn't.
You do, you have to.
But I mean, how, how, in, how would seven years impact the fact that you're saying you need a jaws of life, we'll say, for instance, for a development that has just mainly people living there, I mean, it's not, uh, you're trying to justify the cost of a piece of equipment, and you're trying to say that that development justifies you buying that piece of equipment?
Right, well, it justifies, it doesn't have to justify all of it, only portion, you can't justify all, it has to be. Right, that's why, that's, that's why you have a pre-schedule that portionize how much you put in each, and how much they contribute to that. They don't pay for the whole thing.
I get it.
Okay? And the one thing you have to do with the expenditures, is you have to go out for at least six years, we go out seven in Swansea, to show what is going to be needed in the town out of seven years. This is us saying, okay, these years, we're going to be doing this because we need to, like, the selectmen just signed the other day, correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, uh, the rebuilding of North Winchester Street and California Street, there's 1.2 million that came in. Which is great, because we had 1.9 billion, and it's got, everybody uses a road, so everyone should help pay for the roads. Those are the things, I mean, this is multi-million dollars what we have talking about here in this CMP, that's a lot of money right there. And to help offset, if you don't have something like this, it's basically on the back of the tax bill. Because grants are going to go, grants are going to.
Yeah, we just, we got money for that, because we can tell more. Richard.
But, you know, to your point, so, you, uh, what you brought up about the water company, we can't be, uh, going to have to Flatley to contribute to putting some money into a water company over this side.
No. No. Remember, Flatley Company is already being built, we already proved it.
Yeah, no.
Can't put the impact.
No, I understand. My, my point is that, what you were saying is that seven years out, we know we're going to have to replace the water, or we're going to have to do something over here in West Swansea. But I'm going to build a, you know, a plant or a, this happened dry.
Right.
That or there should not affect, or I should not be paying for anything over here, but I'm not going to use it, you wouldn't be, okay? And I, but what you were saying, uh, I have to go into something else, and how to, to get it directly. But I thought you were saying that far from the impact fee was going to be, you know, from other places, it's going to be up.
No.
I understand that it shouldn't.
You know, we wouldn't, that's why we have this form here, it goes into the plans, if we look at it, we say, okay, that building is over in North Swansea. Okay, so we wouldn't caution the lot, and the money they get here for that price over here, it only be, it's the only thing in North Swansea.
Yeah, you have to justify the impact, and you can't justify that impact.
Right, and you got seven years to do it.
It has to be something that the town owns or manages.
Right.
At least it was, unless we finally get it.
With, with exception of public libraries, it's a question of, like, the Mount Caesar Library is not owned by the town, but yet we support it with money.
Don't we manage it though?
Do we, the town, manage it? Because mine is by trustees, but if you look, if you look.
But you like it by the town, right? So that makes the town manage it.
Right, so they would still, they would still come under that.
Right, that's why I guess that falls on the, yeah, we have to, you have to figure out, again, uh, just how much of a fee you're going to put on those things. You know, on, if you're going to have, hey, that's just the regulations we use from fire department, you have to figure out what the fee has to be. This is what Levins would be doing, what would you put in for the town as well?
I, that's something we all need to discuss, how much, we should, I think, King has, King, King's not going to be a problem, because their fees are so steep, and so numerous, and it's convoluted the way they set up the schedule.
And they don't have any impact fees, do they?
No.
No.
Well, yes, they do, but they just worded a little different, they do have impact fees. And so does Jaffray and, uh, Levina. But nobody else around here is going to be an issue, because, first of all, we don't compete much with Jaffray, we don't compete much a lot with King, because we have more buildable space over in Swansea right now. These other outlined small towns don't really have buildable space.
I think they do could be.
If we, uh, if we don't use an impact fee schedule, and go to what you were saying, Scott, I was saying, identifying a project, and it's going to create a problem as far as services rent. If we're going to say to them, like, we did, or ask Flatley to contribute 30,000 to the resurfacing of the road, we better be specific, because what happened with that 30,000 that Flatley was going to give to, to resurface, went into, was, uh, absconded into the general fund.
Now, that's a good point, because with impact fees, if you have an impact fee ordinance, that money has to go to that thing outside of law by law. But she's got a good point there, because if it goes in the general fund, selectmen, like Jimmy over there, they can put it to anything that they want, that, that needs doing prior to that, but right, that's it.
So we have, we would have to determine, when that project is presented to us, okay, where we, the town's going to need this X amount of money to help facilitate the upgrade of, of services. That money is going to have to be designated specifically to that, and cannot be transferred to a general fund.
I don't know that we can do that, because the selectmen are generally in charge of expenditures of the town, I don't know if the county has the power to do that, unless it's under one of these organs, it's like this. Because it, it have to, you have to have a, a trust account almost, set up by the planning board for that specific product, and when it was expended, the trust account.
And that's what the impact accounts are, the, the work you said, that dedicated to that, to give, Jimmy, what do you want to say?
I just, the main thing I'm concerned about, the impact fee, I, I love the idea, but what I'm, I think what we've got to be really careful on is how far we go with this, because we're at the point where we want to attract businesses and stuff here, and I don't want to see us put too much of a load on, on new businesses coming here, because this is a one-time fee, you've all said, a one-time fee. When we bring a business here, this is a fee that's going to pay us every year now, so you don't look at long-term too with these businesses.
What do you, what do you mean, what do you mean, what do you mean, by that, every year?
The impact fee is a one-time fee that we're going to get, the first, that's it, it's over.
Yeah.
So all I'm trying to say is, we've got to make sure we don't put a big, high impact fee, and, and just make, you know, people not want to come here because they don't want to pay that. Because I'm looking at bringing a business in here that's going to give us money every year on tax.
The tax part, yeah.
So, you know, we got to think about the years, how important it is to get in here, I'm on, I'm on the verge of, how can we boil them here? And when we do impact fees, all I'm saying is, we've got to be a little careful that we don't go overboard and start hitting them with 50,000, 60,000 for this.
I agree.
We're going to have to balance that out, this contribution.
Did you see the schedule?
Yeah.
We don't have to go by this.
Okay.
This is something we're starting.
Yeah, because when I looked at the diagram.
Just want to just say the math, not my strength, okay? So, um, using this impact fee schedule, which I know is at ours, but, um, so if it's a single-family detached, and let's say it's, um, 2,500 square feet, right? And you multiply that by $5.18, then that impact fee would be $12,950, right? That I would have to pay to buy that, build that house in Swansea. But let's say I was building, um, a housing comp, you know, apartment complex, and each of the units was like 600 square feet, and there were 80 of them. Then, and I multiply that times $4.78, and that total comes out to 229,440.
No, you're not, what you do is you take the outside.
No, not according to the, the current grid here. Um, that's true, the other, the gross for area non-residential uses. So like if I was building a warehouse, say it was a 5,000, I don't know, is that a reasonable size for a warehouse, 5,000 square feet?
It's a good, it's a small.
It's a good size.
So let's multiply that by 41 cents for 5,000 square feet, and I get $2,050, which is, in the scale of a warehouse, that's not a lot of money. But in the scale of, you know, housing.
Those are big numbers.
Now, granted, these are not our rates, however, I think part of the question is, which parts of the development world do we, are we trying to address with this? Because I think impact fees on single-family or on housing can be a discouragement to building housing, and I get that, because, um, schools, recreation, you know, if there are high houses.
Impact is really school there.
Exactly. Um, but to address Jimmy's concern, um, is, is it worth our while, you know, if we get $2,000 for a warehouse?
I'm saying, I want to see money coming in regularly, years and years and years, so I'm just saying, we have to really think this out.
Yeah. But I think.
What we're going to go with.
Using real numbers, you know, I think makes it much more real for me, otherwise it's just theoretical.
I, I, I do, and my concern too was the $5 for the family, I think that's way too high myself. I think we need to go lower than what Levina does, I agree. But also, Jimmy, I've done a lot of research, I can't remember the people that I read on, but the studies done on how impact fees, uh, affect growth, and it don't affect them at all.
Okay.
So, but, to your point, they should be kept low. I don't want to see some young family that can afford to build a $300,000 home, all of a sudden have a 6, uh, a $60,000 or a $20,000 on top of that. They need to contribute a little bit, depending on their size, because that means how many children they have go to our schools. Okay, we know where the school budgets are going, unless they can pass 675. Unless that gets passed, we know where the school budgets are going, they don't know, they keep going, eventually, not more than inflation and their actual need for money, because of the administrative costs that keep staying. It doesn't really go into teaching, it doesn't go to the teachers at all.
So, um, Michael, you have a, you know, good handle on capital and food and stuff, right? I mean, you, you see that, and I'm not sure how much of that will, will obtain directly to the impact fees or not. You know, Jimmy, I sit in front of all, there's been a selectman meetings, and, you know, and there, um, you know, the police chase coming in, the fire chase coming in, we need people, we need, we need ladders, we got a lot of four-story buildings, you know, they have expenses, and those expenses are because of the development that's happening. These fees will, can offset, probably a small portion of it, but at least it's something, okay? And I think that's something. And I think that's something, you know, as a selectman, to keep in mind, to kind of, not counter what you're thinking, because it is a balance, but it's a realistic piece of it. Um, perhaps the exercise is to look at these categories, and maybe if there's another one, utilities, uh, and say, what are the type of things that, you know, our police department will need as we grow, because we're growing? And, and, you know, talk with a realistic example, uh, in each of these categories, and then we can kind of, you know, talk in less abstract terms.
That's what these guys are doing with this right here.
Okay.
Telling you what the department's gonna need in seven years out.
It might be home, everybody, and you have to go down to see Christina at the selectmen's office and get one of these. They're, they're public knowledge, I mean, it's public.
Question, question for you, are, are, is staff included? It's not a, it's not a thing, it's, you know, it's human beings, but are anticipated increases in staffing included in this?
As we go, I would imagine.
That would be.
No, this is, this, this is for, uh, projects, not, not the.
Yeah, company trucks and whatever.
Yeah. And I did have the other concern you had about overloading the, the staff at the town hall, that's Jimmy's job.
But, but what I'm thinking, you know, the issue right now really is, um, you know, we don't have adequate money to pay, we, we need more, you know, policemen, we need more fire people, and we don't have enough money to pay for, we have wages now, and that's part of the problem. I'd rather be in the C R P, I know it's not.
It is in here.
But the, the cost of staff, like the cost.
The cost of staff, no, that's, that's not a capital improvement. That's not capital improvement, that's in the selectmen's other operating budget.
Yeah.
Right, and let's get to just the, you know, based on it being difficult to hire people, we get six months into a year, and we haven't found, you know, the right two people to hire, and you know what? Money that makes us look a little bit better. Uh, but, at some point, it's, you know, reality's ahead of us, and we check.
Check.
So, you know, the, you know, Victor, I think what you do with the numbers is, is a good exercise, right? So, you know, pretty much on the commercial stuff, but the impact amount is minimal. You think about how much it costs somebody to put a peaked roof on your building, right? Um, and all that, so, on the, the family, uh, family-oriented stuff, you know, the single-family, probably sixty percent of that is school. For the apartments, it's probably about forty percent, I think, even now, that's what it looks like to me, thereabouts. And it costs a lot, it costs way too much to send kids to school here.
Yes.
I don't, I don't, I don't get, but, but it's, it's, you know, it's required.
Well, here's the, here's the kicker, Michael, about the cost of kids. We actually spend more per person pupil, educated children, than Massachusetts does. Massachusetts teachers make more money, so they get better teachers than Hampshire's teachers. So the money apparently is not going to our teachers to help them and make sure we get the best teachers. It's going to administrative staff, and that stuff. Why does a man of School District Ninety-three need all that staff? And they have two vice principals at the high school now, and they have twenty percent to thirty percent less kids than I live here. We have one vice principal, one principal. And you need to step out of order.
We should start going to the quarterback.
So, anyway, those are some of my thoughts. And again, it's a one-time fee, my friend was talking about, so.
My biggest concern though is.
I'm just making sure that it ain't gonna make the, the difference that we expect from it, okay? And we could be putting a game on, inviting people to buy town, open up some businesses and stuff. And I just wanna be careful of the way I do that, because you're gonna have to have staff handle this money too, don't forget. And right now, I'm sitting on the board right now, and I'm watching, we're fighting, we got, we got people in the town hall office that got six different job titles, you know, which is, is crazy, you know, like you said, the, the town's tax collector is, is doing the cows, and doing this, and doing that, it's on the reni, it's playing, you know, and on this. And everybody has all these duties in it, and it's because of the growth of this town. And, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to consider with this impact fee, and that's all I'm trying to say. I like to bring extra money, and don't get me wrong.
Some of these fees can help hire.
That's right. And it's gonna be very important with the growth of Swansie, to get some businesses in here, that ain't gonna put a big impact on us and bring us more tax money. That's what I'm all about, is that we need businesses in town, there're gonna be less impact and higher taxes to help our budget. So, I, I, I don't run against it, Mike, I'm not saying it, just saying, we really open our lives and we make these decisions.
Oh, right.
Then like she said, that, we can't have a family come in and say, it's gonna be sixty thousand impact fee, that could change their, hey, we're gonna go, go Troy, they got no impact.
And that, and that's why I think these, these fees, that Lebanon's going, it's too high, Lebanon's so.
Well, that's what made me think, because I read those before I came here, and, and I just saw those, I, I did what she did, and did some numbers in my head, and I'm like, wow, that could change people's, um, Swansie to some other time. That's all I'm saying, we don't wanna hurt ourselves.
But this was a study.
I got it, Mike, I, I agree with you, and I'm not even arguing with you, I'd love to see it, shouldn't mind, but I'm just saying, we, there's a lot to look at when we talk about impact fees, that we're not, that we gotta think about.
It's nothing you want to do without an in-depth study of where you're going. You're not gonna jump into this and run down a road.
Yeah.
And say, yes, we're gonna do it. It's not like that. But Swansie is better, and, our hands are tied when it comes to our water systems. And when we're building a lot of apartment complexes, we have a real duty to see that people that are living on the upper stories or underneath would be taken care of if there's a fire in the building. We, the fire department needs to have the pressure that's needed. And the smartest thing I ever heard one of our ex-members say, I won't name him, because I don't want to say his name, but he said, you may remember this, he said, we, Swansie is operating like the seventeen hundreds in the nineteen hundreds, that is in the late nineteen hundreds. And I don't often honor everything that person says, but I thought, golly, he started from, we are not in the twentieth century anymore. And, and people are moving here, we are growing, and people are looking to build businesses here, but if some of them turn and go the other way, they go someplace else, because we don't have the water pressure. And I know that, first thing.
Yeah, I know too, I, I talk to your husband a lot about that. Well, you know, if you're on like this, you wanna know, well, what are the business people saying, what do they need?
Unfortunately, I think we, you know, we didn't get it up there enough. Unfortunately, I said to myself that, the selectmen, that it wasn't smart enough, I wasn't here long enough, but we needed to get that up there, and we dropped the ball.
I think.
That, I think if more people were educated on how important this was, I'd both would ask easily.
Yeah.
And I told Bill, one of the things I'm gonna make sure, that it doesn't ever happen, that we're gonna educate those next time, when they see this more important, but this important. And I think town meetings are gonna be important to bring back, instead of this delivery session, I think.
Oh, what do you?
We could have sat up there, we could have spoken, everybody could have come here, and that would have easily passed. But the more I learn, the more I know, that not to let that happen again.
We were having a little post-game conference at town hall, and I was like, we were so focused on the fire station.
That's right.
That we forgot.
That's right, Eric. This was, this was off, and that, that could have, that should have been, that should have been our main hurdle, but we don't look at it now.
We need to tell.
We've been there for two years.
We need to take the same attack on the water that we did the water. Put that much effort into it.
And as far as the North Swansie and West Swansie, I have heard that the water pressure isn't fantastic in the Sackery Park area either, for selling lots.
Only somewhat of water you can get through those sized pipes over there, but there is a booster station on that hill that was put in when we did that industrial park right there, so that booster pump should boost it up to what they need for fire protection. If the amount of water coming from Keen isn't enough, the booster pump or no booster pump is not gonna do it. Like you have to get a certain amount of flow.
Yeah.
Gals per minute through there, but again, that's, we're only talking hopefully one building at a time on fire. You never know, but, you know, you never know, but that's what's put up there, but you're right, water pressure is not adequate, but, but that's why the pump's in there.
Well, the growth is gonna come here in Western, we can get this way away, and then all, uh, it's not gonna be so much down in the center. Uh, you know, actually, it would be nice just to keep that nice little colonial type, old type thing, but I don't think that the businesses are gonna move down.
You're talking about business?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's West Swansie and North Swansie, especially West Swansie, where we have some local lots left, that, you know, next restaurant, the one beside it, I mean, I know for fact, talking to certain people, that the businesses have looked at it, but for one reason or another, they've kind of gave up on it. Or I believe it's gonna be the water.
It's probably things on the water, because as we know, the onshore water is a big thing.
Yeah, that's true.
Makes the structural developments or putting systems are pretty expensive.
And it's the same thing with those lots down by the, up in Aliso down there too. And the only reason why you got the one on, um, West Street and, and Route Ten, the guy within this, is he don't really need water. The materials guy, yeah, the materials guy, yeah.
Oh, that guy, yeah.
Yeah, he doesn't need water, so.
Right. We've also got the milk complex coming up down here.
That's right.
They said milk, they bought that, and they, we have one side of it there, but they aren't gonna be able to come in that water company. What I know anyways, the state says that the water company just had capacity surging us, and we talked about it before.
Yeah, and then we're gonna have the issue with the, uh, water treatment plant too.
Yep.
That's gonna be an issue.
That's, yeah, that's always gonna be an issue there. The water itself is probably more important than the treatment plant in areas. But the water itself, with that milk coming on, at some point, pretty soon, I would imagine, they'll be in the seats on that.
To be deserved.
And, uh, and the firearms are gonna make the structural developments, and we know that the water company isn't down there to, you know, stir it up there.
No, no, the impact fee is never gonna, we gotta keep it low, I, I agree with Jimmy and Kelly, that we gotta keep it low enough so we don't discourage business. But we do need some help, so we're not killing our poor taxpayers too. And that can help with that stuff.
That would drive people away from you. The taxes runs because we're doing all, because we have all the needs, we have taxes, we have to go up, or.
Well, there's, there's a movement now, next year you might see a bill similar to the one that they're trying to pass on schools, six seventy-fives along schools, where your budget has to be set at the inflation rate, or plus any additional students you have for the last five years. They're trying to push that next year, it's gonna be pushed on the town, and that's gonna make the selectmen stuff extremely hard. I think well with a five percent issue, which I thought he did a good job on, he did that one, that's all it takes, but they're considering a bill on that the next year too.
I think part of that also is the fact that the state must reduce its contribution to the town's, or education.
Right.
So it's just gonna increase the burden on the towns everywhere, so we should be looking at, I guess we should be really looking at something, some way of, uh, helping to supplement, uh, the needs, uh, for school, please, and, and maybe it's, when we have a project, you just think, we assess that project X amount, uh, right at the beginning, and not, you know, not based off of a, a impact fee, but like the Flatley thing.
Well, we, we still have to, if we do it that way, that impact fee ordinance, we still would have to tie it to something physical, like a road or sorcerers.
Yeah, I'm not saying having an impact fee ordinance, but I think there's, there's six hundred, uh, or twenty, how we allow in there to, to assess the project.
We are, I'm saying that it doesn't, uh, it doesn't apply to the schools. I mean, it applies to something physical, not to the schools. If we wanna apply it to the schools in particular, um, and I guess it might even apply to the business department too, in particular, yeah, and the fire department, it has to be an impact fee.
Can I make a suggestion? Um, so, besides, this is the stark contrast to our conditionally used public discussion, where that was more everyone all-in, this is more give and take, depth and valid concerns on each side. Um, why don't we do this? You guys all have the R S A printed out for you, uh, I separated out each section into its own paragraph. Uh, you have an example fee schedule, I'm not saying you can use it, there are other example fee schedules out there, um, it's hard to find one that, or Swansie, this one is unique. Um, if you guys want to take a month to think on it, maybe when we get our new, uh, site plan in, uh, look at the fee schedule, look at what those costs might look like, we're gonna have two on the eight, so that might be a good opportunity, uh, by our next meeting, if you guys wanna look at that. Uh, why don't we take some time, think about it, do some research, reconvene on our first meeting, Jimmy, maybe, and talk about it. This seems like it might take some more time to really implement in, you know, in a way that is consistent with everyone's views. Uh, because I think you brought up some great concerns, Jimmy, you wanna attract businesses in Swansie, how do we do that in relation to impact fees? I think everyone brought up really good points.
I think during the comment, um, well, I, I'm sensing more people are in favor of fees than not, okay? I think with your comment, Jimmy, the, when we get down into the grid, it is the price and amount, okay? Um, and we have to take some realistic approaches. But also, now we have this money sitting in the pool, that has, you know, a period where it needs to get used, and there's a specific category of uses as well. Um, so your, your police department funds need to be used for your police department, right? And so on and so forth, and if not, it's returned to the applicant, I believe in, what, six years is it?
The town can set up to six years.
Okay, so it says six years with interest, right? So that all has to be tracked, and how that gets tracked?
It's gonna be second account, separate account.
Well, we need to really get the fully accounting part of it down, we need to talk to somebody here on how the accounting's gonna work, because you look at this fee schedule here, and, you know, it's so much for the recreation, so much for the schools, fire department, and that, police department, and that has to be kept separate, and it's gotta be, from what I understand, it's gotta be tracked separately, and it's gotta be accounted for at the end of the year separately, correct? That, you spent that money on that specific thing, and that was supposed to be for.
That's gotta be allowed to do that.
Yeah.
And that has the costs.
Yeah, they don't have the cost to do it, but I mean, just, just to see the logistics of it.
All right, I don't call the finance, or we call to, you know, trustees, and like, what does the trustee, you know?
It requires somebody pretty skillful, like Teresa, to do that.
You know why I got into this, right? Because the select board asked me to push this a little bit. So I said, when I would start a conversation, do some research, and have discussions with the board, but it takes all of us to decide what we wanna do, it's not just a me thing, I can push on anybody.
I'm worried about this, oh, sorry.
I'm just, Deb, you know, I'm kinda like Deb, how hard would it be to look at the prior year and give us numbers for how many single-family residences were constructed? How many, I think you can do this in the assessing software, how many, or through building permits?
I just recently did it, actually.
Wasn't?
I just recently did it, actually.
So, and likewise, I, you don't have exactly these, you, you know, retail restaurants, I mean, just to use this as an example, so what kinds of, um, non-residential development are we actually seeing in town, okay? In the past year, or some finite amount of time, right? Because that would, that would allow us to run some numbers, we could pick numbers, you know, whatever our, our total number should be, and just see what we might get in a given year.
Yeah, it may be basis, if everything we did last year, if we applied something to it, we could see how much money we could get, whatever we put into the accounts.
Yeah, I, I can do, I can do that, I've been short on time, but I can, I can do that.
If, if, you know, for our next discussion, if we had that kind of information.
Yeah.
I, I just would feel like I couldn't get it there.
I need to just kinda sit and do it.
Just give us a total square footage, you know, residential, total square footage of commercial, something like that.
And, right, and then if you do those numbers and see how much you got, then we gotta Right, and then if you do those numbers and see how much you got, then we got to get something from the, uh, the accounting department, what's it going to cost, and is that a good, is that a good cost, and is, we're going to have a good return on our investment in terms of it.
I'm worried about that.
I mean, if you're going to account.
We need to sit down and talk with the guys.
I am not worried about putting more work on that.
Yeah, it's a bad time.
It's a bad time right now. Teresa's, Teresa's on these.
We're rocking.
Can I take a line with, but for future, we should talk to Teresa, or she is insisting over there or not, but somebody in accounting to know just how they would handle that.
Do you like to test how busy they are?
We tried to address it last night, we're doing a help, because we're in a crisis thing, and we have to move on, we have to get these up times.
So they would use fees or help, goes another person.
One time a fee.
Is she by herself?
No.
We got to run time, you know, because running time and administrating, that is a big thing, because my phone.
Teresa has a full time.
Sure, Lisa now, no, no, this is, yeah.
Oh, Lisa's her assistant?
Yeah, Lisa's, we moved Lisa in, which is recent now, so that's now, but we still.
Oh, we can take that on a suggestion.
We can let her hang off.
Take a while, think about it, and get.
Well, yeah, I, I would have thought that we'd do, stay a bad time, done this in one day, you know, hey, this is too much.
Yeah, so one should be able to create a spreadsheet and read percentages, and you have a little permit, an X and O spreadsheet, hmm, to plug it in and brace it out, or it's not, it's not going to take that much time, once you do, the spreadsheet's in the computer and ready to go, then you, you know, it's minimal, and you can print it out weekly, quarterly, however you want to do it, and know where you are, and even, I'm sure you can create it so that you have a, a timeline associated with it, with each, each entry. That's something to be looking at. And the other thing, kind of contrary to what I'm suggesting, is bureaucracy, it breeds bureaucracy, if we're adding a person, that person's going to, down the road is going to need an assistant, and that person, so it will, you know, one has to kind of care for them.
I, let me do that homework, I think, I think that might be our next step. Let me do the homework, let me put together a spreadsheet of what a previous year would look like, I should have done this already, I just haven't had the time, and we can reconvene the first meeting in June.
Sure.
Let's say.
I think that's still a good idea. Sounds good.
And the other thing that now everybody's aware of, but there is, to Jimmy's point about trying not to get us to the point where businesses won't come and people won't come, there is a waiver, you can perhaps put waivers in there, which I think should be very rare, but you can have a waiver thing where if you see a hardship and you really want that person to come to town, you can reduce the fees or waiver.
It also allows us to set up a different type of a payment schedule too, I think, in the, so you got to get a consent or something like that. But right.
I don't, I, my real estate, I did a lot of commercial over Nashville, basically what they do, that's a write-off in the business, I never had one saying Nashville has, that is fees, even worse. And I never had a company saying, well, why not that company because of the impact fees? But we're also not talking about small business like we have mostly here, we're talking about huge businesses.
So June 12th, I'll ask them to read it for you guys.
Okay.
I have it in my calendar, I have it on my calendar set, does that sound good?
It's not good.
Yes, I'll maybe take 2024, and go through 2024, see what it looks like. Not just say all our earthquakes, but I'll keep you updated if there are earthquakes.
So the last point I was looking at is four categories, I have here school, recreation, fees, and fire department. I understand these like fees could be used for personnel, for transportation vehicles, for equipment, for gear and materials, and even for capital improvements.
But you do have to show where that particular product impacted that particular thing you want to spend it on.
I think in general, um.
In general, you can probably show anything, I mean, you have to be ready to back it up, saying, yes, this has to be paid because of some or sudden, you can back it up in there, and back it up.
I don't know about personnel, unless you could show that when you add that product in, let's say it's a huge subdivision, something like that, then all of a sudden, we need two more offices because of the cost for that month, then possibly you could do it. You can always do it on any equipment, or cars, or stuff like that. We do it on loans, and we do have those scheduled out, you can get right away.
It didn't have to be a percentage of a car, let's say cruiser, percentage of cruiser, whatever it is, you can't make them buy an entire cruiser for one development.
I, I'm not sure, but I think if the money's in that account, we can use it for that one thing if we want.
But, you know, it's an ongoing account.
Right.
It's six years to spend it all, you know, this came in this year, that, when it came out, you have to give that away this year, and you buy a cruiser then, you know, it accumulates, but do you have enough accumulator over those six years to do that project if you don't?
Well, you could, you could, like, cruisers cost us $7,000 a year now, believe it or not.
I was saying, it's an accounting thing, the accounting board is going to be.
Right, but they can, if they only have $20,000 in the account, they can use that $20,000 towards offsetting that cost gap, and then you stop. Then you say, okay, we bought the car, that's our proof that we used those months, oh, we saved. So if you do that, then that's less tax money that the taxpayer has come up with too.
It's worth reaching out to some of the committees that have them, and clarify some of the questions that we have about what their fees are used for, how do they justify it, how do they account for it, and so on and so forth.
This is something that's got to be like the water thing, and the fire thing, it's going to have to be sold to the people too, if we get to that point where we want to do something, because we know that this is an ordinance and it has to go in front of people. So we have to be able to sell to the people why we're doing it, and it's a benefit to the town.
If it's not going to cost the money, they'll go for it.
Right. Yeah, but we have to show it.
You showed it enough, you showed it enough, there's no, no money attached to it, so.
This looks more favorable to, to have.
So it's easy enough to get that, it's easier to get ordinances through than it is. Yeah, so we have to be careful, not pass too many. So let's, let's reconvene on that. They will have until the 12th.
Okay.
June 12th. So let's just look at conditional uses that we're looking at last week, because Adam gives, you know, print out here the conditional use, not necessarily a form, just of what we're talking about.
Yeah, I don't believe conservation provision is that, since that, is it?
I can, I can report a little bit on that, they, the, the study group that's going to advance recommendations, the full conservation commission has prepared a pretty exhaustive document that includes improvements to the wetland ordinance as it is, and addresses the whole topic of conditional use permits, and how, how the process would work and everything. So they're, they're going to, they're looking forward after the full conservation provision reviews that, they're looking forward to meeting with the planning board to present that document and have a discussion, so.
Would they appreciate it?
Yeah, so.
I'm seeing.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm assuming a lot of annoying meetings when that happens, if you guys are okay with that?
Yeah.
Annoying meetings when that happens? Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think, I think that we're waiting for them to come back to air off, import to that, the rest of the community, and then bring it to the planning board. I won't be up there next meeting.
Might be that meeting anyway. But anybody have anything on conditional uses?
I'm hoping it's.
Comments on the, the paper that Adam? I have a few on it, you have what we've got passed out there? And we had conditional uses, and it's the one where it was, it was part of our zoning ordinance there, that Adam turned it out last week, Whatland Conservation District, and it had just mentioned a separate section for conditional uses as how it would probably appear in ordinance, and that helps, in that, stated indeed. I'll just read off your, if you don't have it, it's, under D, conditional uses, the planning board may grant a conditional use permit to modify the requirements of Section D, provided the uses fall within the following categories, in the categories, work, construction, streets, roads, and other accessways, construction of pipelines, power lines, transmission lines, and other public utilities, and alteration of the surface configuration of the land by filling or dredging, provided that the alteration enhances the wetland wildlife aspect of the site, and the natural contour of the wetlands is preserved. So those are the things that can get a conditional permission, most of the type of thing there was just completely reasonable. And it goes on to say, once a conditional use has been determined, the use must meet all of the following criteria, and that's what we have to, it's criteria as to how we grant those conditional uses there on property, properties, just like a special exception. So number one was, proposed use shall align with the intent of Article A of this ordinance, which our client, we already have, describes the wetlands. And then on two, we talked about this last week, on two it says, there shall be no reasonable alternative to the conditional use that would result in less impact on the wetland, and we talked about economically part of it, and all that type of thing. So I, I suggest a change to number two, which would make number two read, there shall be no reasonable and no realistic alternative to the conditional use that would be economically viable and result in the, in less impact on the wetland. Meaning that it has to be reasonable, has to be realistic, and it would have to be economically viable to, you know, have to do another route through, you know, they want to go here, but you can easily do it over there economically, and it's viable to do, so you do it over there, it has to have something in there, it has to meet that criteria. And number three, says a proposed use shall not have any adverse impact on public properties. I don't really even know what that means, I don't even think we need that in there, because that's all done on plenty of work anyway, you can't have any adverse drainage or anything on, on a body of property, so that probably doesn't even need to be in there. Number four, the applicant is required to provide a detailed scope of work from a certified wetland scientist to the planning board and conservation commission at the applicant's expense. I think it probably should be by a civil engineer, because a wetland scientist is not really perky to the things that are done, you know, they're perky to the soil, and they can tell you about, you know, all types of wetlands they are, a wetland scientist, but they can't really tell you too much about the civil engineering there, and so what's going to be done, and what's going to be dug, right, why it's going to be dredged, where the drainage is going to go, the whole thing, so I think we should have it, that the applicant is, is required to provide a detailed scope of work from a, we'll say certified civil engineer, or just civil engineer.
Question?
Go ahead.
Is there an umbrella word or phrase that means, you know, qualified professional person?
You can use that, that can be put in there.
I think if there was a, you know, a bigger, because it could be that you need to have, I mean, who knows what kind of category of expertise you might need to have, and if we restrain it, restrict it to just, you know.
Just right, you know, just like that, qualified personnel, or however you wanted, that'd be fine in there, you know, just not limited to one person, that'd be fine.
I would like to keep that bigger.
Yeah, and, and presented to, what was that, to the planning board and conservation commission at the applicant's expense, since it's the planning board doing it, it should only be presented to the planning board, and the conservation gets a copy of it, they shouldn't have to be required to give four copies to the conservation commission, and four copies to the planning board, it should just be the planning board. Number five, the applicant, let's see, must submit a wetland mitigation plan to the planning board and conservation commission, which shall meet the following criteria, we don't have that criteria down there, but again, the, the state oversees any wetland mitigation in, any wetland dredging or filling or anything like that, and some of our RSA four two A, you know, the whole big giant wetlands.
Is it only the wetlands or that smaller?
Well, if you do, they have to, if they're going to dredge into the wetlands, dredge and fill it all, they have to get a dredge and fill permit from the state, and if there's going to be wetlands mitigation there, then the planning board can talk to the state about it, or the state can tell the planning board about it, vice versa, but how that is done is usually overseen by the state, the Swansea planning board says, okay, your mitigation, we want you to dig a hole over there, stick some sand in, and some reeds in there, that's your mitigation, the state say, no, we don't want that, that's, that's not right, so they have jurisdiction over it anyway, the planning board cannot override that, so that should be backed up to the UO, if they're going to dredge and fill, they have to get a permit.
But that's just dredge and fill, like, say, they're asking for a conditional use permit because there's no other place to locate their garage.
But we're talking about, this is talking about wetland mitigation plan, as specifically.
That specifically means dredge and fill, as what?
That is, well, you're going to, you know, you're going to fill in some wetland over here, so you have to mitigate it over there. But we probably won't need that in there either, because the state oversees that, they have jurisdiction over us on that one. Let's see, number six, the applicant shall receive all necessary state and federal permits prior to issuing such a conditional permit, use permit, I don't know if we ought to make them get all those permits before we give them their permit, because sometimes those permits won't be given until the planning board gets there, okay, so it should just be that, that they should, applicant shall receive all necessary state and federal permits, period, and the planning board can issue it on the condition that they get those permits from the state. Now, let's see, number seven, the planning board retains discretion to deny the permit if it determines that such a permit is not justified or warranted in accordance with the aforementioned criteria, that may or may not need to be in there, because obviously, if the planning board turns it down, they turn it down. Either case, number eight, this provision is adopted as an innovative land use control pursuant to RSA six seven four colon two one, and the planning board is vested with sole authority to administrate and to grant a conditional use permit. So, any comments on any of that?
I kept you, you know. I know we'll be talking about that more once.
Yeah, we're going to, this is another thing that's going to take a long time, and it's going to be over a long time, we haven't got that far, but just those recommendations, I think I can give my notes to you when we mail them to you.
If you don't mind, yeah, I'll take a picture.
Give that, yeah, take a picture.
So you might have to pass this on to Sherry before we meet, so we can address those.
Yeah, it could be, but some of those can be removed, I think, and does a wording change on some of them, to make it clearer for the planning board. Anything else on conditional use permits?
Yeah, just one point, a point you made, Victoria, on widening, widening, widening
Expertise, yeah.
I, I just, I have concerns about that, because every one of these big engineering firms has specific people that they go to for this, for this, for this, not necessarily because they always fully specialize, but because they have a tendency to think a certain way and approve it, and I think we want to make sure that really what we're, that we have somebody who's truly qualified to, to, when we're talking about wetlands.
How would you do that?
I don't know, I don't think it's maybe widening, I think it's, you know, maybe wetland scientists, that's a near two kind of a number, this sort of like civil engineer, that makes sense too, to me, but getting going too much wider than that.
What was your suggestion, Victoria? I forget what the word is.
I was, I was looking for.
Qualified.
An expression of it, yeah, because.
It's actually a lot of people.
It could be, it could be, but the point I was thinking was, you know, sometimes we need to ask for help, and we need to ask for help from people who know what they're talking about, and I don't know what the umbrella term is for, for that big category of people.
In neighboring communities, wetland scientists is the most widely used.
But for the scope of work, I know they're delineating the wetlands, where they are, and marking it all up for scope of work too?
Yeah, I mean, but we don't have to model this after every.
No, we don't, so. Yeah, because the scope of work, we've been along on that more than what wetland scientists can give us, scope of work, we're going to learn more about it.
Yeah, I think we should pass a couple of different phrases by our attorney, and see what they think.
Well, Victoria's phrase is a good one, I mean, you know, if we don't like the plan, we can also hire our own and get it done.
Sure can.
So maybe, you know, if we need to, you know, to say qualified person, we can only say the planning board can require a wetland scientist with warranty.
Well, this is a qualified professional example, you said?
I can.
That's a good phrase, to have qualified professional.
We put it in there, cordial as well, you.
Yeah, then, then you can suggest what he wants to say.
I don't, I'm, but he still wrote, when Phil Stone did the engineering part of that, did we rehire the soil scientist, or did they, did somebody?
Did you go on that walk through there?
Yes.
That was a soil scientist.
Who, who? Didn't acquire or request him to be in there and do that.
It was an engineering firm, yeah, Phil Stone.
Phil Stone, is that for our benefit, or for, because the people in the opposition?
Well, he was asked to, anytime there's going to be a project like that by, by wetland, it has to be delineated by soil scientists before they even start, they have to have an engineering plant, they had it in a plant showing what that was, but we wanted them to stake it out, because on paper, it's different than. but we wanted them to stake it out, because on paper, it's different than, than it ends up on the land. So that's why I had to go out there and stake it out exactly where it's...
But we didn't hire him.
We didn't.
My point is that, and you, you mentioned it, if they're going to build an extra wet, wetland, they have to have a soil scientist come there.
And if they don't, we can request it.
Okay.
Sometimes it might be beneficial to have someone who's not drawn up the plans for the building that's gonna be on the property that we're questioning too. So at that point, I think it might be beneficial for the planning board to hire an outside qualified professional who is connected to the project.
Well, we're just talking about scope of work here, we're not talking about a whole site plan.
No, but what, what I was talking about is, did you mean over on the storage things? Yeah, and, and Fieldstone had drawn up the plans for that building. And, and it was Fieldstone, it walked with us, and all it was, what, on the...
Well, it was a soil scientist was there telling us exactly what it was, because I quizzed him on a few things there. You were there, weren't you? Quizzed him on some of that, you were there also. It was a soil scientist, not hired by us, but hired by Fieldstone, but I think it still had to defend his license there, but he couldn't show us things that weren't quite right.
Jane, I think you're referring, you're referring to is called a third-party review. And the, and the planning board is within its rights to request a third-party review at any time.
Yes, and I, I, but we sell them due.
We sell them due, because generally, they've, they've been doing, you know, they've gotta defend their license. Their license is on the line when they draw it out there. If the planning board doesn't like it, you know, we can file our own, or get our own, or we can tell them to go back and do it again, something like that, but... Exactly, they kind of have to do it correctly. They can make a mistake, everyone does, but they have to do it correctly. But again, we're just talking about the scope of work, you know, because just for that permit, the planning board's gonna wanna know, well, what are you gonna do? How much are you gonna fill, how much of that wetland is gonna be dug out of there, and, and on and on like that. Not necessarily the, the building you're gonna build there, or any, any scope of that. We don't want the dirt engineer in there to decide, or tell us, you know, we're not... And a motion, oh.
I didn't, I didn't realize that you were going from that. As, as the general state...
Turn it over here.
I, I don't know if it was in the paper or not, but the federal court dismissed the entire lawsuit against the individuals and the town.
Really?
And I haven't heard any further whether or not the plaintiff is going to file an appeal or not, but the federal part was definitely done with prejudice, so...
So that's it.
They can, the state part, what they, they had alluded to as part of the state was denied also, but without prejudice, meaning that they could come back and file in the state, but because of earlier decision between the two parties, part of the complaint was agreed to be withdrawn. The remainder of the thing probably did, did subject also.
If it goes Supreme Court, they can probably check it here.
That's what that's the, they decided, anybody can... They don't take cases like that.
Anything else? Ma'am, are you here to speak with us?
No.
No, okay, just do observe, we wanna make sure.
Because the public interest, but Mark was walking on the job.
Make a motion. Okay, motion by Richard to adjourn for a second, a little second by Mark.